Mike is our new planner.
Hi, Mike.
Hello, everybody. And that is Carpins.
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 Carpins. All right, very good. Before we begin, just want to have a, just a moment of silence if we could, especially for all of our men and women who are overseas and protecting us with their lives, and for all of the folks that are trying to find their way through this situation in Gaza. So if you would bear with me for a moment, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. We will continue on with our agenda. Our first item will be the Agenda on November 21st and the meeting minutes of October. Are there any additions and/or corrections to either of those reports? Okay, if none, is there a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes from the October 17th meeting of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Karen. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is what we call our citizen comment. And we let our folks from our township come and talk to us of some things that they may have on their mind. So, folks, if you have something this evening, please, please stand at our wonderful podium, sign in, and let us know if we can do for you. Hey, Joe.
All right, Joe Stevens, 978 St. Clair Highway, also township supervisor. I just want to give everybody an update on their park situation. Tom, Borden and Son Construction, so far, they have done most of the parking lot. They got some gravel to bring in, but they have poured all the sidewalks out there. And the pad for the porch on the front, the front picnic area, the four handicap parking places, and will a sidewalk all the way back to the pavilion, and they're pouring the pavilion area there. I think they got it all complete. Now, the pavilion's been on order. Our Parks and Recs Committee, Advisory Committee, which we stood up, Gina is a member, she's the board rep to it. They did their first action. They selected the color of the roof and the frame. They selected a forest tree roof with like a beige framework to it. It's gonna be like wood underneath it too. It's gonna be really nice. They got some more gravel to bring into the parking lot, and then they'll plant some grass seed in that. They'll be able to erect the pavilion sometime during the winter. That's not weather dependent, because the bolts aren't in place. They just had to erect it. So, but yeah, it's looking good. It's, it's coming along, and it's, now it's impressive to see. It's just not a feel. And we had, fortunately for us, seeing where they had kind of too much filler, we kind of banked it up next to where the BP station is, but I, I'm sure that's a bank of dirt we can maybe use in the future, depending on what we do, our future plans. On Saturday, we had a groundbreaking, or symbolic groundbreaking ceremony, since they played out, so they hit broken ground. But, the Parks and Rec members, they were, had all these ideas, you know, what we should do. I mean, what, tell me what you should do. And I said, no, no, it's your park. You come up with the ideas. And so they're excited, and this is, they're all residents, local residents, all residents from the township, excited about wanting to develop our, our, our first public space here on Fremont Highway.
Any questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. What a, what a great opportunity this is gonna be for the township. Really, really good stuff.
Okay.
I'll be very quick.
Yes.
Joyce Pitts, Thursday, 971 phone, 971-5900. And I'm just gonna speak just a moment, just to bring some thoughts. I want you guys to all keep thinking about this. We had a truly lively discussion last month. You know, all the things still in play with, you know, what we're all talking about for our water, for what's gonna happen to the roads, what'll happen in the community. But I think one of the things that I didn't think, ask, ever be prepared for last time is a questioning the group that wants to put in a five acre pond, or lake, or whatever you wanna call it, is, does anybody really know how many gallons of water in their five acre pond?
Joycey, there, I don't know.
No.
But.
Go ahead.
We can't talk about that.
Oh, no, I'm just gonna, I'm, can I just, I can just throw it in there, right?
Right, just plug in a real broad, general scope.
Okay, so in a general scope, the over thirty-two million gallons of water in a five acre pond that I hardly think, in fact, I figured it out, went delving and looking, seventy acres of lavender will not use even a fraction of that. So I think they have an adequate pond right now, but, you know, if they would clean it out, they'd have plenty over.
Thanks, Joycey.
Yep, they don't wanna look for money grab, all that sand and all that money in their pocket.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Yes, any, anything else? Okay, then we're going to move on to bold business, our next agenda item. Some solar power discussion. And I've asked Steve and Karen to maybe bring some information in, and Steve, we should pass this out.
Please.
You can pass that out, please.
Sure.
Okay, Steve, if you would, please, or Karen.
What I passed out is an excerpt from the Michigan Township Association newsletter, online newsletter. And there's been some action in the last couple of weeks at the state level regarding sightings of solar energy farms and wind energy farms, and also what they call renewable energy facilities. What, what has happened is the State House and the State Senate has passed legislation. The governor was supposed to sign it this week before Thanksgiving. She hasn't already today. It'll be signed tomorrow. Basically, it takes local control away from locals and puts the control over of solar energy facilities in the hands of the Public Service Commission totally. It does give, allows the townships, the communities, to pass an ordinance regulating it, but that ordinance specifically cannot be any more restrictive than the state ordinance. So in other words, why have one? You, once somebody comes in, I can give you the reason why they have one in a second, but it can't be any more restrictive than the state ordinance. I don't have a state ordinance yet, but it's some, all they're really talking about is setbacks, height, and sound levels. And if you meet that, you go to the state and you get a permit. And they have to give you a permit within sixty days. There's, if the township or community passes an ordinance, we would have one hundred and twenty days to approve. Of course, the, the, if we didn't approve it, it would be approved automatically. Still would have to go to the Public Service Commission, and we again can only enact the same rules that they have. The only advantage I can see is the township can, can take in an application fee for this. Put the coin on us with you. You're gonna have a mob of angry people screaming at you for nothing you can do about it. So why would you wanna handle it? At least in my opinion. There is a fee that the provider has to provide to a township or community, two hun, two thousand dollars per megawatt. Now, they're gonna have a minimum of fifty megawatt sites. So that would be a hundred thousand dollars the township could collect on this. But it's gotta be used for public safety and infrastructure, as agreed to by both the local government and the provider of the money. So you have to, so we could get a hundred thousand dollars to reorder these facilities and to use it, everybody agrees on it. Other than that, that's all I have right now. It's pretty much been taken out of our hands. This came about through the governor. It was pushed through in less than a month by Democrats out of the, what I saw, higher density communities that probably don't even have.
Hamtramck was one of them. The reps from like Hamtramck and Wayne County.
Wayne County, yeah.
So the rest doesn't have no ability to have it even happen in their backyard?
Right.
Exactly, and that's what this might be.
Out of curiosity, fifty megawatt, a fifty megawatt is the smallest size that falls under this?
Right, right.
At fifty megawatt, how many acres would it take to create a facility? Anybody know?
We can't, this is still the common.
I was just curious, like.
Hopefully, I'll work for you next time to get an idea of what.
Fort Grasset just went through this, the range of power, and denied their, their permit.
Now, it's gonna go to the state and they're gonna approve it.
We, we had an instance similar to this, not with solar power, but with schools. They developed an acre bay, the McDonald Elementary on County Line Road. We had nothing over it. All we did as a township was give it a street address and approve the wa, an agreement from the water, from the trailer park and.
The parks are the same though, correct? We had no control over that either.
Right.
Don't they follow that?
And, and more or less, they says, you know, if you, it was kind of somewhat of a subtle threat if we didn't approve that water line they had come after us, so, yeah. So that, that's the, only the closest thing we have so far that I've dealt with.
I would just be curious, like, to see if we knew how big of an acreage it takes to make that minimum of their thing. When we were at that meeting, it stated, when we, me and, remember at that last meeting?
Yeah.
They said, for these facilities to happen, they have to be the right acreage and the right location. So they have to be close to a power source. They can't just be randomly set anywhere. So it wouldn't hurt to maybe, just so we knew within our community, what acres, what areas would maybe be subject to kind of keep an eye on, see if this is ever gonna happen, you know?
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can certainly find out what the specific legislation is and see how we can adapt it to.
Like how close, like, do we even have the power sources necessary for one of these to happen? And obviously, we have the.
Well, I think we must, because the resident Roma is a DT looking for property in the township.
Look at what Fort Grasset does. It was all, it was all, so they were just going. According to the zoning clear maps that I was watching.
Steve, just a quick question, and I know this is, this is like a shot, it is, that's gonna hurt a lot. But if we were to change our zoning ordinance, folks hang with me. If we were to change our zoning ordinance and only allow large solar systems in industrial, does it matter at all?
No.
It wouldn't.
No.
So they could come in our ag area, put together X number of acres, whatever they need, and not even blink a eye at us.
In fact, your zoning ordinance would be ruled invalid or illegal.
Wow. Could we have a zoning ordinance that we don't allow anything smaller than fifty megawatts?
Sure.
That, 'cause we can't stop a fifty megawatt. So if we end up with that, we're gonna get it anyways, but now we're not gonna have a twenty, a thirty, a forty, and a fifty.
Sure.
You know, we're gonna be stuck possibly having these, then just don't let the smaller ones happen, because we can't stop this, but we could stop that. So we're not a community that gets a ton of them? And allow only maybe home use or farm use?
I don't know what fifty megawatts is.
Yeah, no idea.
I don't know if I know what that size is. It might not even be feasible for anybody to develop less than that. You have some great questions, but I think we need to find out more before we can.
It is, what I don't quite understand is that we know this is coming. It's not new. And I don't see our county jumping in here at all. And maybe politically, they just can't. I don't know.
Jamie Reed, when they were giving hearings in Lansing about the investment reception.
God, I mean, even if, if all of the townships.
All counties, townships were, were enabled by the state. We can only do what they allow us to do. And they take total precedence, the state.
Mr. Chair, if I, well, first of all, does the state law prohibit communities from requiring screening of the solar farms?
Screening?
Yeah, like plantings or that kind of law.
You can only have screening at the state, whatever the state tells you can have.
Okay.
And I haven't seen that ordinance yet.
Yeah. Some of you may not be aware, but by far our biggest property owner, Casco Township, is consumers' energy, an energy provider. And they, they were here, and they're interested in putting solar farms on their property. And they own a lot of property in Casco Township. So just be aware of this. You want to put solar farms on their property. It's a little bit different twist than people getting leases.
Thanks, Joe.
Multiple townships, there's a huge list occurring every day, are making basically a declaration against this full state control of zoning for solar. And I think it would be who has to pass the same kind of resolution.
Unfortunately, it's too late. Legislation proposed, I'll read this, the legislation strongly opposed by the MTA and its membership organizations that created, that went against this, was nullified by the state in passing this legislation, so, nothing we can.
But they're just going, everybody's going on record, even though it was passing, they're still going on record being against it, because this may end up in the courts.
Well, and, and we might be able to at least do that, but first, we've gotta get some more information.
And I would talk to Eric Turner on that, too.
And we need, Joseph, we probably need to talk with Chris about this, if we have an opportunity. Give him some thought.
This is no different than the state taking away control on other things from us.
Yeah, I know.
And next to come, unfortunately, is gonna be mining. And we may not have any authority to stop, if you wanted to stop, that facility.
Right.
So then it doesn't go onto a Pedro?
Pardon?
So just, so in the audience, so you know what you're seeing, and what really is concerning us. We're, obviously, we're in this five-year plan you're gonna hear about next. And we were trying to work a little bit, again, with some solar energy type restrictions. You know, and we do have restrictions right now in the zoning ordinance. But, as I stated, one of the things that I wanted to see is that solar energy, over a certain amount, could only be done in industrial zone. You know, and you aren't gonna stop them everywhere. So we would at least have them able to get industrial zoning, and what Steve has just told us right now, is probably not gonna matter. So when we have the opportunity to protect our property, this is, in my mind, bigger, believe it or not, than Marine City Highway Court.
Yeah, it's huge.
This is not, this is affecting the whole state of Michigan, probably the whole country. I mean, they wanna turn us upside down and inside out as far as making electric our main source of energy. All that being said, you know that. Thank you, Steve. Continue to do your research, if you would. We'll get with you and Karen and, and see if there's just anything that we possibly can do, and maybe it will be only putting it on record.
They're just going on record, understanding that right now it doesn't really mean anything. It, I don't know if through zoning, is it possible, a lot of times, companies like Range of Power, and they, they change their names all the time, they lease the property, and then they abandon it. And the landowner then becomes responsible for high property taxes, because it's now zoned differently and blah, 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 blah. I don't know if there's a legal way to get around it that way. I don't know. I know a lot of smart people are working on this, not just our township, but places where they've actually like Fort Grasset, I'm in Marshall. They're looking at this to see what can be done. So I honestly think it would be who has to kind of ride their town folk, their coattails where we can.
We are.
You know, try and get ahead of the game.
There, I believe there's enough folks here and, and the township who really are very, very, and your township supervisor is very, very concerned about what is going to happen here.
Yeah, I know, our local reps in Lansing, when they had the hearings over these bills, you could, if you watched any of the hearings, the city boys in their little brown shoes and blue suits, you know, talking about how lovely it's going to be, and then our reps up here, bless their hearts, you know, up in, from St. Clair County, in the rural areas, they ring them new ones, with facts, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter.
Okay, let's move on, folks. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Karen. Under new business, we have none, so we're going to go into the master plan, the five-year update. And we are again initiating comments from our audience up there, and we've kind of been doing that. We have a small group tonight, so we're kind of payable to, to be a little more one-on-one with you folks. But if there's something else that you would like to express, please do. And again, this is concerning the five-year program that we're on to upgrade our zoning ordinances where we believe they should be. And Karen, we're, just, right now, we're on track in our schedule, correct? And would we be looking to bring it to the public March or April of next year, do you think?
Yeah, springtime would be the, basically, the public review of the draft. The public can comment on it. Planning Commission can make any revisions before we bring it forward to a public hearing. The planning commission can choose to approve the master plan, then the board can adopt it, or the planning commission can adopt it, the planning commission or the board.
And Keith, that is on the re, potential rezoning that you're talking about for spring?
No, this is the community's master plan.
Oh, sorry.
It's basically a, a community plan that needs, that is reviewed every five years, and the outlook on it is for twenty years.
So that information, now, it's like, I noticed when I went online, like, there's no minutes yet for October, September, October, online, other minutes prior to that are. So how would you be able to get a look at that before two or three or four months down the line? Or that night at the meeting?
The public.
The information.
Yeah, the public draft will be made, we post it online, when the draft is approved to be, to begin the public review process.
Okay.
And how long is the draft usually up for?
Sixty-three days.
Sixty-three days, so that gives a few weeks for the public to review it, make comments on it. Those comments are then reviewed by the planning commission, and it's decided if there should be revisions to the draft before we get to that public hearing.
Thank you.
So Karen, if you, if you would, if you could.
Just, yeah, I'd like to make.
Yeah, Joe.
Um, the master plan is, I know we've talked, the idea was kicked over, about having a statement about urban growth, like a half mile north of Marine City Highway, that, you know, that we're looking for to keep the industrial development, light industrial development south of that, you know, at least for the time being, of course. You know, we can't determine what future boards or planning commissions will do. But something to think about, you know, a statement or something on urban growth on that there, half mile north of Marine City Highway.
Got it, so. Okay, thanks, Joe. Okay, Karen, why don't we move forward, if you will?
Yeah, so tonight, we're looking at the thoroughfare plan. In front of you, you have information from basically your previous master plan, which also had adopted the previous master plan to that, that thoroughfare plan. Because in the previous master plan, it, it was decided just to re-adopt the previous master plan, thoroughfare plan. And then I've also provided just some updated information about the thoroughfares in Casco Township. So from the last master plan, the, there was one goal for thoroughfares. It was to maintain and improve Casco Township's system of roads. The objective was to preserve the rural character of Casco Township's road infrastructure. The strategies for this objective were to work with the Row Commission to identify roads that should remain gravel, maintain unpaved roadways with increased regularity and consistency, identify and prioritize road areas in need of drainage improvements and ditch maintenance, seek out sources of funding for drainage improvements, maintain agricultural business along county roads by encouraging maintenance of heck roads and periodic clearing brush, and investigate natural beauty road designations for appropriate roads. And then the second objective was to enhance traffic circulation and ensure roads are capable of accommodating traffic safely and at an acceptable, acceptable level of service. And the strategies were to identify those roads that have projected volumes or functional class, classifications that justify paving, such as Meisner, Church, and Meldrum, advocate for road improvements to Marine City Highway rather than construction of additional I-94 interchanges, limit the number of driveway incur cuts to the minimum necessary to provide for safe ingress and egress, particularly on Marine City Highway, and identify and initiate appropriate traffic calming measures on Fremont Highway, Marine City Highway, Grasset Avenue, Hanley Road, Division Road, and Palms Road.
So, in looking at our existing system, and with the Marine City Highway corridor, and I know the changes that are happening on Meisner Road, that is for sure. We have, we are seeing more and more trucks on Meisner Road, it seems like, every day. And I get it, I'd be doing the same thing. As we're looking at this, Karen and Steve, is this one of those topics that we should invite the county in for a discussion? Or, or is that kind of a, should we do that or not?
What do you think, Steve?
Impolent in the master plan?
Yeah, at this point, or?
No, I don't think it's necessary. We did, because we're basically, we have to, we'll have our own recommendations, but we have to follow their guidelines anyways, so. I don't see, they're going to be, well, they're going to review, we're gonna send it to them for review. We'll send a copy of the draft master plan to them, so we'll get their comments back that way, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so right now, it's, it's, we're trying to lead the pack a little bit, at least to let them know what our thoughts are, where we wanna go, and what we think is appropriate for the township.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
They're copying our draft plan, and they'll respond accordingly if they feel that it's not appropriate, or.
I, I talk to Row Commission virtually weekly, and we're back, today I was talking to the area informant about what needs to be done. So, we, we have a plan hammered out for one of the big things, for some of the ARPA money we'll be getting from the county board commissioners, we'll be replacing some of the culverts over county drains that need to be replaced. So there's one this fall gonna be done on Springborn, then we have three more in the next couple of years that are gonna be, are in critical need. So, we have, talking to them all the time. Can never do enough to get you here in Casco Township.
I have a question. Did they, did they ever talk about signing, after they paid? I have a question. Did they, did they ever talk about signs? I, after they paved, I called because of the, you know, the speed they got on Meisner. So I called and the Road Commission just said, well, everybody knows when you take driver's ed, that we don't put signs up there because it's supposed to be 55 and we should all know that. I'm like, oh yeah, all right. That's a great answer.
Yeah, it, it's an interesting.
You know, so they.
Interesting web that we weave, believe me.
I mean, there's no signage on the road.
No.
I'm sure it's 55. Nobody really goes on it except the kids on their two-wheelers, but.
Planners, any, any comments as we're, you know, kind of walking through this with them? Please jump in here and let us know your thoughts. If anything is stuck in you that you want to ask.
So it's, it's what we're going to change on this page in the new one.
That, this is from your previous plan, so if you want.
So stuff like paving Meisner would be gone because that has already been done now.
Right.
So that would come out and it would be where we see that happening in the future.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on then, Karen.
Well, well, I guess this is the, this is the master plan discussion, the thoroughfare. I guess knowing these are the goals and what's happened in the township since the last master plan, are there areas of concern on the roadways? Are there intersections we're concerned about? Traffic volume is increasing. So if we identify areas that maybe we'd like to make some sort of improvements, whether it's traffic calming or safety or, you know, biking or walking concerns in certain areas.
If you put a roundabout on Meisner, that'd really make everybody happy. That'd slow you down.
This would be the part of the plan that these items would go in.
Who said that?
I did, so did you. Nobody likes them. They slow you down. You have to slow them down. No choice.
But you know, one of the things and, and when you look at a, at a section of road and it would just use the area that I live on, Meisner Road, in between Interstate 94 and County Line. And that's 55 miles now. I can guarantee you almost exclusively that when these, the number of folks coming off of Interstate 94, the overpass and heading westbound on Meisner Road, they're not going 60 miles an hour once they get half or a mile or, or farther on. And in fact, I was going to write a letter through my township supervisor to the county road commission and just see if there's anything they can do to, to lower the speed. I mean, that, that is a problem over there. Well, remind me. Please, yeah. Yeah, about the speed is, yeah, we could talk to them about getting signage up there, but it'll be 55. Technically on the roads here, the gravel roads, it's 55 miles an hour or safe driving conditions. As we talked before about getting it signage and it's combination where it would be a combination of the chair, the director of road commission, member from the sheriff's department, state police, it all three, it's very complicated. Paved road may be a little bit easier to get it, but like signage on gravel roads, that's, that's an entirely different matter. The biggest thing, you know, is, and it was kind of addressed in the Marine Corps, Marine City Highway corridor study, that widening the Marine City Highway there going eastward from County Line all the way up to Church Road, they're talking about multi-lane there. That may help alleviate some of the issues there coming, because I, I was reviewing the, the material clearance and by far, that intersection there is the most dangerous one, by far. An interesting thing about corridors and that, how access, there's a group trying to get monies through the Ralph Wilson Foundation to build a trail from the city of Richmond to the city of St. Clair along Division Road and then way to Fremont Highway. Ralph Wilson had been the owner of the Buffalo Bills. He was from the Detroit area. He set up a foundation about having funds for communities to develop trails. He was going big on that. And there's a big wide easement along there that. And another thing about interchange, you talk about the interchange there at Meisner Road. They, we were told, this was several years ago, that would be triggered by volume and we haven't nearly become close to that threshold yet. If there's a certain volume that would trigger that along there, there would be investment made. But I think that's years, if not decades, off.
As long as you don't pave anything else. If you start paving in north-south, your east-west is going to become much more yours. My vote is to keep it. Just break them a little more.
Well, yeah, ditching would be a tremendous effort.
They did ours. I don't know why. Somebody came through and really trench started nice, really deep, three years ago, and it helped. Of course, we had to replace our culvert, but oh wow, that's the price to me of doing the country. Happy to do it.
Planners, any, any other comments?
So would we, we need to readapt, we need to change, changes to the first paragraph, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to make changes to the first paragraph if we see appropriate?
I mean, I, as, as we're writing the draft on this portion, we can update it, but I guess today I'm trying to see if there anything new that maybe is not mentioned or, you know, new concerns since the last one that aren't addressed by any of them.
And do we want to leave any, all the existing stuff still in here or?
Existing stuff that has yet to happen, I guess.
Yeah.
Unless there's items that we want to remove.
Do we even have any control over the exit interchanges, construction of additional interchanges? Doesn't that have anything to do with it?
It's not, but having some, some of these items in your plan either adds support to it, whether the county does it or the state, or you know, if, if funding, let's say, you know, there wants to be, or there's a need for signage and funding becomes available for it and funding for the township becomes available for it, it's mentioned in your plan. It's more likely that these items can.
So like where it says that due to the significant safety concerns, techniques should be implemented to manage access and control speeds along Marine City Highway and other high-volume roads. Can we specifically state Meisner Road in there?
Yeah.
Marine City Highway, Meisner, and other, because I think those are our two, at this point, our two biggest problem votes. I could be wrong. Pardon me?
Division Road has a lot more high volume.
We want to list the roads or?
We can call them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they have a lot of trucks come through.
So we know that we're playing.
Are highways available, St. Clairway?
No.
Oh boy, it certainly is changing over by us. Yeah, oh my gosh. So.
We're probably taking some of our.
Well, well, we're taking, we're taking. As far as Marine City Highway, Marine City, Meisner's still local road, just like, well, it's a county road. Sinclair Highway is a local road, a township road. But the two truck routes, of course, of Marine City Highway and Division Road and Grashaw and the township, them are the three big ones. And that's what they should be using, you know, like.
There's, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of garbage.
Should get backed up on twice.
On Sinclair Highway, only trucks doing deliveries on Sinclair Highway are allowed on.
Right. Oh, right.
No thoroughfare.
Oh, no wonder it's so nice taking that to Grashaw to warn.
Yes.
Okay. So we kind of, we've got some, something we can look at and chew on a little bit. Okay, good. Is there something else on your agenda? Can I jump in on a couple of things or?
That was just to review the thoroughfare plan.
Okay. And we spoke a little bit, Karen, about this, you know, planners, that as we're, as we're doing this review and we, each of us know a certain part of the township, a little bit or maybe someone else. And what I'd like to see is look at and, and maybe question Karen and Steve, I'll give you an example. County Line by the Trailer Park, the property directly south of that. It's kind of a dead piece of property. And I'm not sure if we want to do anything with that, if we need to. But it's, it's just an example of what I think you should look at as planners as we're going through this process. The other thing that, the way it is over east, I'm sorry, south of 94, Steve, where we talked with the other folks who were bringing that tankers in and.
The trucking operation.
Trucking operation.
On Springborn?
Yeah. The, I, I know you told me this before, Steve, but is there some concern on your part with that piece of property directly south, it's Springborn to, I think it's a B-2 zoning?
Yeah, we have some of it zoned residential.
Yeah, I think it.
The master plan is residential and other, and a larger, significant area zoned as retail. And I don't think we'd ever get the volume, the, the, the market where we're supporting that kind of retail in that area.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we could be challenged in court by not providing something that's marketable.
Right.
So we'll have to look at that because.
On Springborn and, and County Line?
That whole, if you look behind you, that whole corridor in County Line there in the orange, that's, that's, there's a lot of.
General commercial. That's up by Kroger, ready?
No.
No.
So bank it, it's on down in the bottom corner. See where it's orange and then it goes to that light blue where it goes to office.
Office. And this stuff, it couldn't be supported.
Right in the car.
But those are, those are the kind of questions that, that planners, if you could take a look at, obviously, at Joe anywhere in the township and where we might take a second look at some of these properties. And, and talking with a couple of real estate folks, that, that property directly south of the Trailer Park.
It's all, the whole area is.
Yeah, that they're, it's just not very well marketed. In fact, we had a guy, owners of it, they came before us wanting the zoning changed. Because back in the early seventies, I can remember, because my dad was bill inspector time, the Trailer Park wanted to buy all of I-94. There was a house, I remember that old farmhouse, that's out there, it was a white farmhouse. And they didn't want to sell out, so, you know, they.
Who owns those pieces of property now? They're just vacant. The two, isn't there two parcels between the Trailer Park and I-94?
Yeah.
Is the Trailer Park still interested in those two parcels?
I don't know.
Can't see anybody else in the world.
Just a comment on the thoroughfare. One areas you might want to look at, certain for paving is like B-3 Road, a half mile north of Marine City Highway, because that's industrial zone. I think your E-3 Road that needs to be paved in the township is there because they got some industrial operations, you got trucking operations. They got that Indian Summer, I think that's a big thing. We might want to consider it because Church Road falls into that half mile north of Church Road and Meldrum Road. They all touch the industrial zone there.
But can you just pave a half mile?
You got the money, or love to Gina.
No, she didn't, she didn't. You have to pave a whole section from stop to stop sign.
No, no, we can just do a half mile.
That's what I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Because it only, the industrial zoning only goes a half mile north. After that, it's exo.
Oh.
Yeah, so, yeah, but them are the ones that I should have thought of sooner that we should look to pave.
And I did see, they do list the streets at the very bottom, so if we just edit Meisner to that, it would cover it. Sorry.
And that's the kind of discussion we need to have, folks.
For traffic calming.
So Mike, as you're traveling around and something hits you, take the road.
We're not here.
Yeah, and bring, bring it to us because that's the reason we're doing this. It's the five-year plan. And if there's some properties out there that seem, and we're not, believe me, we're not in the real estate business. We're not trying to sell the property, but we are trying to allow people to develop it in such a way that it'd be good for the township. Let's put it that way. And so just think about that, you know, and, and it is something that we should do, I think. You know, Nikki, you too, and obviously, you know, you know the township well. And if something sticks out that, eh, you know, maybe we shouldn't look at this, this is, this is the opportunity to do that, Mike. Okay? Okay. Alrighty, anything else, Steve? Karen, planners, anything else you want to chit chat about on the five-year plan? Okay, Nikki, we okay?
Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to the next topic, and that's our commission comments. And just so you know that we went to the St. Clair County Metro PC Training Seminar and Gina and I attended that on October 25th. It was very, very informative. There's a whole litany of material that they gave us and what I'd like, and Steve, maybe this is something that, that you and Karen could maybe help us with also. What I was thinking is, you know, this is a lot of reading material, quite frankly, for all of you and for me. Right, Vicki? And, and Steve is so good at, would, would you be willing to maybe take a look at this material, or Karen? And just maybe pull out some of the bullet points? And it kind of dovetails into your seminar, which you gave us a few weeks ago. And there's just some good things in there, I think, that the planners should be aware of, and it helps all of us down the road. Okay? I, and I'm just going to ask, does anybody receive an email, Gina, or anyone, maybe you and I did? But as far as we know, Sue, that.
I did not. I think I would have recovered seeing it, because I printed most of the stuff that was sent to me, but I don't look into it.
So Vicki, I'm not sure that, maybe we could do this on email, just send the whole.
I can scan it.
And, and then we maybe get the bullet points with, with, with you and Karen.
We don't have copies, so, so can you send us a copy?
Yeah, we'll get a copy to you.
Yeah, if you give it to me, I can scan it.
Yeah.
Do you have notes on yours?
Pardon me?
Do you have notes on yours?
Yeah. But.
So do I.
Brenda bailed me out again, as usual. And I think she has that on email. She, because she contacted the county, but Vicki, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay? But maybe check with Brenda.
Can I see it?
Oh, absolutely.
I'll do the graphic.
Oh, I, yeah. But it's, there's a lot of good material in there and I thought, boy, it'd be great to delve a little bit with what Steve gave us if he can and, and kind of go along that way. Alrighty. Thoroughfares. That's all we have. Planners, do you have anything else that you would like to discuss this evening before we adjourn?
I think I've got everything in there covered. I was going to say, check out these.
Steve?
Just got a quick response to Sue's question. It takes 2.5 acres per megawatt.
Yeah.
So that's roughly 100 acres for the smallest.
That's 200 soccer fields for a 50-mi, 50-megawatt facility. Put that in perspective.
Yeah, according to something I just saw, a rule of thumb, you could assume 2.5 for.
But 100 acres is, is not that big.
No, it's not.
Not a 40, it's not.
Yes.
I mean, it's huge compared to, you know, but it's not.
The one thing we obviously got here, which we're all proud of, is we have, we're trying to protect our property as much as we can. Okay? All right, anything else, folks? Well, Mike, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Look forward to meeting you.
Just eventually catch up with all you guys and get all the information, so I can just sit quiet for a few. Take it all in.
And I'm sure Vicki will back me up on this, obviously, if you have questions. You know, procedures and that type of thing, that lady can just budge you through. And you've got my phone number.
Yes.
And we will.
I'm sure I'll be calling these tickets.
Right. Sounds good. And Steve and Karen, believe me, I do this all the time. Call them and they, they walk me through it and make me understand it.
Yes.
So I can do it, believe me, anybody. Trust me. Okay, we're in line for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting of November 21st.
Thank you, Sue. Is there a second to that motion?
A second, thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Karen, thank you, folks. Be safe and a great Thanksgiving.
Blue Water Fallen Heroes Community Banner Program is in need of these fallen hero photos in the Casco area. If you have a photo, please contact 810-434-6407 or email WEICHSLER10@gmail.com.